Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the October 3rd Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please? And for this meeting, I'm going to need a clerk pro tem. So may I have a motion, please, for a clerk pro tem?
Make a motion for Patricia B., clerk pro tem, for tonight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint a clerk pro tem for this evening. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Wertz?
In our meeting tonight is Mr. Ron Bessie, Mr. Alan Slavin, Ms. Judith Whiteside, Mr. Rich Bowen, and myself, Patricia Wertz.
Mr. Chadwick has recused himself from this meeting, and Mr. Sullivan has been excused by me. May I have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a hearing, excuse me, a hearing at 7:05, and it's not quite 7:05. So I would ask to have a motion on 6A, which would be to approve temporary signs.
Make a motion that we approve the making and positioning of temporary signs requested by Wareham Minuteman and the Militia Company, Inc.
Second.
Third.
Motion made to approve, and with a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. We will go to item 6D. We heard several articles, or the explanation of several articles a couple of last week. And they were articles on the CPC. And I would like to have a motion on articles 9, 10, 11, and 12. 9 is the Chapel Lane Affordable Housing Project. 10 is Mark's Cove. 11 is Westgate Property, which is an overseeing stanchion. And 12 would be funds to the Affordable Housing Trust.
I make a motion to recommend the following articles, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
For favorable action.
For favorable action.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Yes.
I think from the land trust, they're going to make a change of some kind.
They were going to bring it down. They can't bring it up in terms of dollar amount, but they might have brought it down.
Should we abstain from that one, since we don't have it?
Oh, because they can-
And we don't know whether the moderator is going to accept it or not?
They can always go down on an article in the terms of the amount. They cannot go up.
I know.
So if you want to, but-
No, I just want, as long as people know that-
Yeah.
-there's a change coming.
Let's, yes, so let's just do those first.
Okay, never mind.
Motion made and seconded for those four. Is there any further discussion on those four articles for favorable action? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Article 17, Ms. Wertz?
Yes. I make a motion that we recommend, make a favorable recommendation for Article 17, Saturday hours.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action on Article 17 on the town meeting warrant. Any further discussion on that motion? Yes.
Again, just for the public, the town clerk has requested us to do this.
Yep. We did hear from last week. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Without walking right up, yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is done. It is now 7:05, and I will ask for a motion to open the hearing on the dogs owned by Mr. and Mrs. Crane.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself. The hearing is now open. I'm going to turn the running of the meeting over to Mr. Bowen, who has the documents, and he will proceed. I'm going to make a statement for the record. This is a business meeting, and I expect everyone to behave in a businesslike and appropriate fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Would everybody who intends to testify, please stand and raise your right hand?
Raise your right hand.
Do you swear to tell the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you very much. You may be seated. For the Creans, Mr. and Mrs. Crane, and is someone representing you tonight?
Yes, sure. Good evening. My name is Robert Perry. I'm an attorney, and I'm representing them tonight here, okay?
All right.
And before you may I just give you some booklets I prepared for you.
Of course.
I believe it satisfies everyone that, you know, they've done everything they've been asked to do.
Ah, good. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you. How have you been?
I'm good. Yourself?
Good, thank you.
These grandkids are driving me crazy.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Meet you.
I see him at the Y all the time, chasing him.
Mr. Perry, I'm going to ask that you hand my copy to the dog officer, the DNR officer.
I have one for you.
Oh, you have one?
Oh, absolutely. I got tons of them.
Would you please hand them to-
I thought we got five selectmen, and we'd have Derek and everybody, so. One for you. You're all set? Okay.
Devin, do you, do you want to come forward, just sit up here, the animal control officer and Director Buckminster? Is that your title, Gary? Director?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Free.
Thanks. Okay. Just to confirm, you have the notice. I know it's referenced right here in the document that you have. The allegation that's before the board tonight is that Mr. and Mrs. Crane were not in compliance with the order that the board of selectmen issued back on June 14th. And maybe what we'll do is just have some brief opening statements. I'll let the animal control officer speak first, if you have anything you want to say, and then Attorney Perry can go from there.
Thank you.
So originally, the concern was-
Excuse me, could you identify yourself for the record? I'm sorry.
Devin Cludier, animal control officer. The, the main concern leading up to this hearing was that certain requirements had not been met by the Creans with a more than generous amount of time. The main thing that, my biggest concern with the restrictions was having some sort of enclosure to keep the dogs in that met the requirements. Going to the property, there were three sides of the property that were fenced in, and then the water line was not fully fenced in. So I discussed with Mr. Crane to, that to meet compliance, we had to have some sort of dog pen set up on the property. We discussed that on several occasions and hadn't reached an agreement, per se. But, I mean, seeing this now is definitely-
You see.
So, so Devin, was that the, was that the only outstanding issue?
No, the other requirements had not been met at the time of requesting the secondary hearing, but I had received an email from Mr. Crane on September 12th that listed the, I had requested that he at least set up an appointment with a veterinarian to discuss whether or not Bushido would be eligible to go under anesthesia to have a surgery done to meet restriction number six, requiring her to be altered, so that way she's not reproductively intact.
Right.
So that was one of the things. He did meet that requirement so far. He sent me a copy of an email from the Marion Animal Hospital that they have an upcoming, that they had had an upcoming date to have her, her seen. The only other thing that I would like to bring to attention is that Bushido's licensing with the town is out of date. It looks like it expired December 31st of 2022, unless this may be an old one. He did, since, has been able to provide me with photo identification of both dogs.
Uh huh.
And I think that-
Can you get over to the town clerk and fix that up?
I, I think the dog's licensed.
Was it?
I'm looking at my file right now.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right. Was that it, Devin?
Yeah, yep. I mean, it seems like to me, everything at this point, as long as there's a copy of the insurance, which it looks like exhibit number F.
So what is the date that the surgery is scheduled for?
Don't believe it is. If you've read the letter from the vet, that's my exhibit G, which is number six on your list.
Yeah, so why don't we just let, Attorney Perry, give us your opening remarks, and then we can bore down onto the-
I think the vet's a little confusing. The vet is concerned with the dog's health, but hasn't come to a bottom line either way. I don't know what the vet's going to do in that regard, but if you read the letter, the vet's concerned because the dog's periods are not constant. They're sporadic. As a result, in order to spay, according to the letter, you have to hit the middle of the period, and he doesn't know what the middle of the period is. So I think we're still proceeding on that one. As far as the pen, the pen is in place. It's on a cement pad, and I've given you two pictures, one of the pen generally, there's an enclosure over the top.
Which exhibit is that, Bob?
That would be my exhibit C, two photos. The second photo being the manner in which it's secured to the cement base. Now, that being said, let me say, I don't imagine any circumstances under which those dogs would be in the pen. These dogs now are confined, as the board asked, in the house. In the family's home, the dogs are permitted to run in the house. If they have crates in the house, they're put in the crates. And the dogs are brought outdoors to do their business. The leashes and muzzles you see in my exhibit D are utilized, they're brought way down to the other end of the property, which I show in my exhibit B, the three photos of their property, and right back into the house. So they're never left outside under any circumstances. So I just, the pen is in place. I think it complies with what you asked us to do, but it's, it's kind of a waste, quite honestly. But it'll stay there. I mean, you asked for it, you've got it. You know, I don't know what more to tell you about the pen. He, he's done it. There was a little confusion to begin with about how to do it, because you talked about the two-foot stakes if you have it on sand, but ultimately, he put it onto concrete and fastened it with concrete fasteners all the way around. So, I mean, I, I would think that would be satisfactory.
Devin, what do you have to say to all of us?
I, I mean, I'm, I think it's satisfactory with everything that's, that's here. You know, I'd like to obviously discuss the, I mean, and you're more than welcome to discuss that with your veterinarian, the fixing with them as far as when to schedule that between heat cycles of the dog, but other than that, I mean, I think, you know, now we have the enclosure, there being, one of the concerns with having the pen was that they were loose on the property when they were going out with just the, the electric collar and the GPS collar. So to have that fence, the, the pen would have met the requirement of number two. But having both that and seeing that the dogs are leased when they go out now, I have no complaints.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, over to you.
I'll be, just one question.
Please, Director.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Gary Buckminster, Director of Natural Resources for the town of Wareham. I know one of the concerns that we were discussing was the fencing that goes around the house itself, that it went down both the left and right side of the house, across the front of the house. There's plenty of fencing there. I think one of the concerns was the dogs being loose without any fence going in, and I think at one point, they discussed the fence going into the water. With the dogs being in the yard and you providing us with pictures of the fence that surround the yard, has the fence, the perimeter, been established? Because I'm only, I'm only looking at this with the collars and everything else and seeing the exhibit here with the, showing pictures of all of the metal fencing going around the house, but is there anything along the waterway that still can contain the animals? Because that's what we're looking for.
Well, there is not, but the, once again, the dogs are-
Actually, four sides of enclosure.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Gary.
No, no, sir, go ahead.
Go ahead.
The dogs are not permitted to run in the yard at all.
All right, so we don't have-
They always have these leashes now and the muzzles. So, you know, I suppose if a dog pulled away from the leash, you know, maybe with Mrs. handling it, could go in the water, but where's it going to go? I mean, putting a fence across the water is not an easy ordeal, as you well know. I mean, we've got to go to conservation. You know what that's like.
I do, indeed.
So, you know, it doesn't seem like a practical fix. The practical fix is what they've done, I think, which is to ensure that the dogs don't run in the yard, and the dogs certainly don't go outside the yard, because the dogs don't leave, except for example, to go to the vets. And when they do, the trucks brought right into the yard, because there's no on-street parking there anyway, and inside the fence, the dogs with the leash and the muzzle are loaded into the car and then taken to the vets. So we're also after he takes, there's been no other place to take them yet, other than the vets, but there could be other places to take them, but, you know, they're totally restrained.
Madam Animal Control Officer, I keep calling you, Devin, but what's, what's your take on that?
I, I don't, the fencing's not a requirement, as long as the dogs are, they have the secure dog pen, so if the dogs are ever to be, I don't want to say unattended, but if they're not restrained-
Or they're outside of that pen that's built on the concrete.
So if they're, if they're within the pen, then they obviously don't have to be restrained on a leash or anything like that. Outside of that pen, they would have to be restrained, and it looks like they're meeting those requirements. So as long as those two things are met, then the fencing doesn't pose an issue.
Okay. Madam Chairman.
Mr. Bessie, any questions?
I mean, not so much a question, more, more of a statement. So our original ruling was handed out on June 14th, 2023, via certified mail, based on what I'm looking at. You have that in your exhibit. We gave a 30-day requirement to meet all of our requirements. And we know that 30 days didn't happen, and I can just say that, just from the letter from the animal hospital dated 9/22/2023. What frustrates me is that although what we're seeing is all the requirements are being met, they were met on your schedule, not ours. And to me, it's a slap in the face to this board that we gave you requirements and you didn't meet them. And here you are in the 24th hour, right before we're sitting, you're sitting before us to talk to, not meeting the requirements, and now you've met all the require, well, you've met all but one, because you just met with the vet a couple of days ago. We all have jobs to do, and yous guys had a job to do when you met with us the first time. And I don't take it lightly that you took all the time that you wanted to, to make this happen. We have a lot of things to do in this town, us, the resource officers, animal control officers, and the fact that we even have to sit here tonight to have this discussion about the fact that you didn't meet the requirements within the 30-day timeframe is ridiculous. I'd like to know why you took so long to meet the requirements.
Does it ever call me back when I left messages at their office? And then I was told you'd have your opportunity to speak at the meeting. Why, I mean, he gives me some reasons, in part, I would not disagree with you that the deadlines weren't met. Some were impractical, some should have been met. Almost everything was met. What wasn't met, as you point out, is the pen didn't go until recently, in part with confusion as to where to put it, how to put it. Do we have to have two-foot stakes if we go on the cement? I had to order it. It had to be ordered. The other thing, you just don't get into the vets immediately. The animal control office told you, they scheduled a meeting, they had a, a letter they gave to her saying, you know, we've got an appointment coming up, we can't do it till 9/22. That's it. Well, I'm not even sure that was the date of the thing, but that was the date the guy wrote the letter. So, you know, things happen. That's all there is to it. I don't want to have a problem here by any means, but, you know, they've gone out of their way to come into complete compliance, I believe. And I think that's the important thing.
I correct you, it's not complete compliance yet, sir. Mr. Bessie?
I'm just, I'm baffled. I mean, the, the, I, I had to order it, and you can buy them down the street. Like, the ordering, I don't take that as an excuse. It's an excuse. I'm beyond, I don't even have words for it. I mean, we, we talk about safety and the utter disregard for safety of your neighbors, anybody else. It, it's just a, it's just a lack of respect. I don't, it doesn't matter how you cut it.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Basically, our Natural Resources Department, which handles the investigations, et cetera, seem to be satisfied at this point, which basically cures the thing. The one thing that really bothers me is, Mr. Perry and I know each other pretty well, but for me to get this, when we open a meeting up, to have to look at it and not be able to physically go and look ourselves, is extremely difficult. Normally, what I would have done in normal circumstances for me, if someone gives me something at my hearing, that I have, is I'd say, well, we'll have to, you know, reschedule so we can look at this. So I'm just kind of slapping your hands, Bob, to say, I appreciate all the work you did, but you gave us no chance to look at this.
Well, if I may, I, I think almost everything in that booklet was supplied to animal control and ultimately supplied to you.
We never got a part.
You never got anything?
No, sir.
That's contrary to what I understood. And if you didn't, I-
We did not.
On behalf of my clients, I apologize, but I understood that you did.
You understand.
I, I gave some thought to trying to run down today, at least bring it in today, because I only, I only got it finished up this morning.
I appreciate what you did. I'm just saying that, you know, this is something that, in normal circumstances for me, I would have just said, thank you, and we'll see you later, some, some other time.
I understand.
All right, so if this happens again, Bob, please make sure we have it, at least a week in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm, like my peers, dismayed that we had to have tonight happen. And, I mean, if you continue to look on whether things were done in a timely manner, the insurance is dated September 21st. So that certainly wasn't 30 days after we met.
Well, the insurance was in effect. That's simply, if you read it, USAA is proof of the fact the insurance has been in effect.
Yep.
And we didn't tell you how long, but it's, it's not like they didn't have insurance the day of your first meeting.
We don't know what level they had it at. It's irrelevant at this point, because it's here. The biggest thing moving forward is to get this dog spayed and to feel comfortable that you're going to stay on top of it, and we're not going to have to go and follow this up again, because it costs all our time, it costs the town's time, and it is not respectful. So I would love you and your dogs to have a happy home. Please get that done.
Awesome.
That's it.
If you look at that insurance paper, by the way, it tells you that this, this policy was in effect as of January 18th, 2023. That's my exhibit E.
Could I just make a comment? I'm sorry. I didn't have access to that insurance policy until today, and emailing, the emails that I received from Mr. Crane are not fully what you have presented here today. I didn't have photos of the, the enclosure, the fencing, the property.
Oh, I agree with you.
So I, I did just want to state that. If I had received those, we would have been able to most likely cancel the hearing at that point.
I have some questions. That both dogs are supposed to be humanely muzzled and restrained at all times. Is that the case? Is that the case, when they are outside of the house?
Oh, yes.
Yes?
Well, I, I don't know. You think it's a little hard to read at times. I think if they're not in the pen, they do. I don't think they have to be leased.
That's what I mean, yeah.
We agree with that, okay. And, and they are.
Okay.
When they're outside-
I have a second question, sir.
They're leased and muzzled.
The pictures of the dogs, in my opinion, do not satisfy the requirement, which included, not limited to, photographs, videos, veterinary examination, tattooing, or microchipping implantations, or a combination of any such methods of identification. I'm dismayed that the dog may or may not be licensed properly through the town.
I've got that here. I've got the license here.
Excuse me, I'm still talking. And the letters are to alter both dogs, not just one, and I need to have the proof that both dogs have been altered, right here.
All right, one's already fixed. We'll, we'll get you proof of that. That dog was fixed before the first hearing.
Again, Mr. Perry.
I understand, I understand.
In, in our licensing database, Bowie is, it does state in there that he's a neutered male, so that-
Thank you. Okay. There was another issue about having the dogs in the water, which is not part of our complaint, but that certainly was brought up before, that the defense, in fact, would be to contain the dogs outside of the water, body of water. And you have stated that that is not the case, but the dogs will never be, unless they're in the cade, the pen, they will never be off-leash or unmuzzled. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I suggest that this board continue this hearing until all of the requirements have been met, because they haven't been, in my opinion.
Again, to Natural Resources, are you fully satisfied they've met all conditions now or not?
No.
Once we have either a certificate of spay, whether the, the rabies certificate reflects that after a procedure is done for Bushido, or a letter from the veterinarian stating that they feel that Bushido would be incapable of the surgery, that's the only, the last thing that I'm, I'm looking for, and then to make sure, obviously, that that one licensing is, is up to date, but-
I prefer to keep the hearing open, because I don't want to have to advertise it again. I don't want to have to go through this again. And if we hold it open, they do not need to return, presuming that the information and documentation is forwarded to the Department of Natural Resources, as well as our office. Then we will close the hearing without the, the owners being present, or you being present, Mr. Perry.
I would recommend that we basically do exactly that and wait for our town department to give us the final information, and then we can come back and finish the hearing.
Is that all right with you, Mr. Perry? In other words, if we-
I'm going to ask you to, once again, delineate anything that you feel you need further from me, so I can make sure I get it for you.
The, as far as I'm concerned-
I mean, I understand the dog. Either the vet has to say, I can't do it, or he has to do it.
Correct.
So it's always true.
Right, and I-
I don't disagree with that.
And the evidence of licensing-
I guess that's my problem, getting to the vet and laying the law down.
And the evidence of the dog being properly licensed.
I got the damn bags in the truck.
Okay. Those things need to be-
Okay, those two things. All right.
And, Mr. Perry, just so that I clarify it again, your clients and yourself would not be required to come back to a hearing. We would, we would open the hearing and close it, so-
I appreciate that. I understand.
Is that all right with you?
Absolutely, and I'm going to jump on these things-
Thank you.
-tomorrow and get them moving.
Mr. Bowen, do you have any suggestions as to anything for-
No, ma'am, very sensible approach.
Thank you. May I have a motion to continue the hearing until all, excuse me, excuse me, until all me, until all of the conditions of the two orders have been met?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to continue the hearing until all conditions have been met. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is continued. We will look forward to getting the documentation. Thank you very much and good night.
Thank you very much, folks. Good to be here. Good night now.
Thank you. Before you start talking, could you please leave the room because we can hear everything that you say? Thank you so much.
Thank you to the Natural Resources personnel also.
Says either/or. Okay, we're going to go back to the, thank you. Going to go back to the agenda. I am going to read into the record a document that I got from, if I can find it. From Mr. Sullivan. I received this today, and I sent you a copy, but I'm going to read it into the record. Dear Honorable Wareham Select Board, on approximately September, Monday, September 18th, I was contacted by Wareham resident Ms. Brenda Ekstrom. To summarize the interaction Ms. Ekstrom made, two complaints, the first being that she was unable to locate the electronic posting for the notice of the 2023 Fall Town Meeting. The second complaint is that, as the meeting of the Select Board to establish dates and notice the Fall Town Meeting occurred on Thursday, August 10th, Ms. Ekstrom alleged that the notice should be posted on the Clerk's Board on Friday, August 11th, as that would be the ensuing 24 hours, as written in Section 2-4, Subsection C, warrants in the Wareham Town Charter, Exhibit A. Since the complaint was submitted, I have spent time reviewing both matters and find the following. Complaint two. Section 2-4, subsection of warrants in the Wareham Town Charter, calls for the notice to be posted in the ensuing 24 hours. As this does not specify business hours, or not, I turned to Section 1-7, definitions of the Charter, Exhibit B. The Charter states, days, business days, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays when the time set is less than seven days, or every day, including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays when the time set is seven days or more. As 24 hours is the same as a day, it is logical that the time requirement would be business days, as business days is for when the time set is less than seven days. While there is room for confusion, it appears the posting of the notice to the town's principal bulletin board was done in accordance with the charter. Complaint number one. The Charter requires the notice to be posted on the town's principal bulletin board and on the town's website. In interviewing staff members, it appears that the notice was properly delivered to the town clerk's office. The notice was then sent electronically to the IT department in a timely manner to be posted on the town's website. However, it appears that the email was missed by IT staff. This means that while it was posted properly on the principal town bulletin board, it was not posted to the website at the same time. It appears to be a regrettable mistake. With these facts in mind, I find that while the notice was posted properly on the town's principal bulletin board, it was not posted on the town's website at the same time. Recommendation. While much of the posting and actions required by the Charter has been done in an almost automatic fashion, there have been recent Charter changes and staffing turnover, which makes such items less automatic. The warrant and the postings are under the purview of the Select Board. I recommend that the chairperson, the clerk, and all staff that have a part in the posting and creation of the warrant meet to create an updated checklist that follows Charter requirements. I would recommend that the clerk of the Select Board be the custodian of the checklist to be a safeguard against something like this mistake occurring again. This should be done before the process begins for the next annual town meeting. Lastly, in anticipation of this finding last week, I request that the Select Board add a confirmatory vote to close the Fall Town Meeting warrant to the October 3rd Select Board agenda. So, I will tell you that I met with staff today, and there are changes being made in procedure in the office so that there is never any slip between the cup and the lip. It was a mistake. And further, I would note that the complainant actually submitted three properly documented petition articles to the town meeting warrant. So, I would ask for a motion to make the confirmatory vote as outlined on the agenda.
I make a motion to make a confirmatory vote to close 2023 Annual Fall Town Meeting Warrant.
Okay, that was for practice. I have to, evidently, I have to have it so you can hear it, correct?
Yes.
So, I make a motion for a confirmatory vote to close the 2023 Annual Fall Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to confirm the action taken. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I just want to make a comment. We, like everybody else in different municipalities, have had a lot of retirements and a lot of changeover in personnel. At the end of the day, we are responsible for whatever goes wrong, and I will have to take responsibility. But the bottom line is, we're doing the best we can, and if we make a mistake, we admit it and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Okay. Are there any other warrant articles that we talked about that you would like to vote on?
Not for you.
No, it's not for me. It's okay.
No, I have another one. I'll pass it.
Did we talk about the union contracts? I know we reviewed them.
I don't want to do that because we may have other union contracts coming. Remember, we have three that-
Yeah.
-we were noted, we might have.
Watch you get smiley.
Just smiles.
You know.
No, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Awesome.
Ron's good.
So, I believe that we have taken as many motions as we can. Is there any further business to come before this body?
You want to do the announcements or not?
Oh, announcements.
I'm glad you asked.
Sure, I'm glad you asked. Mr. Bessie?
Yes, just one, one quick announcement. I know it's kind of late. It's the 24th hour. But tomorrow morning, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, the Cumberland Farms on Cranberry Highway in West Wareham is hosting Coffee with a Cop. Now, a lot of people know that it's National Coffee with a Cop Day. So, we'll have as many officers from the department as can feasibly make it come from 8:00 to 10:00. Coffee and beverages are free to all from the hours of 8:00 to 10:00, and there will be pastries and things given away. So, it's a good opportunity to come out and meet some of the local officers, ask them anything that you'd like to. They'll answer what they can and not answer what they can't. But I would encourage you to come out and, and, you know, just spend some time. And if you really want to get to know some of them, they're really a great group, great group of guys and gals. And I just encourage you all to come out and, you know, give an opportunity to ask a question because I'm sure there's plenty out there.
Confirm the Cumberland address again?
It is 2360 Cranberry Highway-
Thank you.
-in West Wareham.
I just would like to add to this. Our police department has a wonderful reputation in terms of doing for this community. They've shaved their heads, they've grown beards, they've done stuff a truck, they've done all sorts of things. They've donated blood, they donate toys to kids who are in distress. And they, they truly are nice people, not just people in blue. And I'm, I didn't know about Coffee with a Cop, but I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
You know, they, they gave away all the, the donuts and coffee from the-
I saw that, yeah.
You know, so they do, genuinely. I mean, I'd keep the donuts myself because I love donuts, but, you know.
Is that what you're serving tomorrow?
I'm not, I'm actually not working, so, but yeah.
So, you're going to be eating donuts tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll be eating lots of donuts tomorrow, drinking lots of coffee.
And tea.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Anything else, Mr. Bessie?
Uh, no, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
First, I'd like to thank Kat Jones, the OBA, all her staff, all the volunteers. The event Sunday, we had three cancellations by rain. We finally got to do the event this past Sunday. Just to give people an idea what was involved, the Mohegan boat at the pier had two trips booked for two different organizations. And you can imagine cars coming and parking, having to move to different places. At the same time, we had the onset Bay Center had basically booked their top floor for an event, corporate event, which was out on the beach, et cetera, catering the whole thing. I believe they had 200 people. So, that was another issue. We had myself and Paul Gerard did the car show. It listed as an antique. It's actually a muscle car show, et cetera. We had 120 cars approximately on the pier as well. Across the way, Kat had, I think originally booked 100 vendors, but I think she had at least 50 or 60. We had two different music groups playing during the day. And then, of course, at the end of the whole thing, the fireworks, which I've been, I would say have had at least 10 or 11 people come up and thank us for the fireworks because it was so nice. And again, I'd like to thank the work. I don't think people understand how much work is involved to do this. Just so you understand, fireworks, the cost for the basic fireworks is $65,000. It's not something that this town or an organization like that can easily do. Because we have to have police, et cetera, safety, there's another $14,000 in expenses, and you continue from there. So, again, you know, when you see any of the OBA members, Kat Jones, et cetera, you really need to thank her. That's a huge amount of work for the town. And there were a lot of people coming in from different areas. I didn't see anybody having any difficulties. It was nothing at all. The police had, they were just great about the whole thing. And it's, it's something that the town should be proud of. It was a real, what I call, family fun event. And I'm not going to, I'll let Mrs. White side talk about the Veterans Parade and stuff. But again, part of this Veterans Day Parade, I will repeat again, is to honor Bob White as well.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add to what Alan's talking about. I went and attended as a citizen. I went with a person from the Wareham Land Trust and a person from the Conservation Committee. And we probably spent five or six hours just walking around, talking to everyone, seeing everything. And then what was interesting is, we left to go home just as the fireworks started. We had some things on our schedule, but what was fascinating is as we drove through a number of the back roads, Great Neck Road, all over the place, people were all along the roads, they were along the beach, from the whole town out there. So, the number of people who I think enjoyed what Kat and the group did is probably three times at least what we saw at the physical event. So, it's just really great.
Thank you. I will remind you all, we are having a Veterans Day Parade on November 11th. It is the first one in six years. COVID took a toll. And we have at least one and possibly two grand marshals who are in their 90s. We have a whole lot of really interesting floats and activities. There is a free meal that has been totally donated. And we have, we are paired, paired up with the militia because they are 501(c)(3) and they can receive the donations that are enabling the town and the militia to put this parade on. One of the individuals that has been invited to be a grand marshal, his last name is Fearing. And if you know any Wareham history, you know that Mr. Fearing and the family have been intimately involved with the town for several generations. The, there is a email address, warehamvet, warehamveteransparade@wareham.m-a.us. There are posters all over town, and we would love to have people volunteer to help direct the traffic, or put a float, a marching band, or whatever you want to do. I think that Mr. Bowen will be walking or marching with the militia, but I'm not sure of that. Is that correct? Awesome. So, it's an opportunity. We have a lot of activities for the children before the parade steps off, including face painting and balloon twisting. You make balloon animals. And we got a supply of, like, beads today, you know, like they have, no, it's fun stuff. So, it, it's going to be a really good family event, and we're looking forward to it. And thank you very much. Yes.
Rich, do you need a shovel and a bag? Because you'll probably be right behind the horse this way.
The horses-
Let's just say I've had a lot of training for that.
I, I thought you did. I just want to know if you needed a shovel and stuff.
The horses that are coming, they are, they have people walking behind them with shovels, so you don't need to worry about it. Anyway, is there any further business to come before this board?
Do you have town business number C? I think we just have to read it off.
I don't think I have anything else. We have no minutes. Next week, we will be back at Zoom, and we will be hearing from virtually every petitioner of all of the articles on the warrant, almost all of them.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. It is not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin? Excuse me?
Why not?
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much. Good night, Wareham.
Good night.